Katrina Borario. Madalyn Nash. Marissa Nokan. Julian Parker. Kathryn Queesnell. Madison Rodriguez. Picture time. Yes.
Alright, let's get to the state champion.
Rhode Island State Champion.
Right there, we go ahead.
Is TJ Dos Santos here tonight? Come on up TJ. Jay Lee Kopeciak, is Jay Lee in here?
Jay Lee.
Jay.
I'm sorry.
Jay Lee in here?
No.
Jordan Pompey. Luke Borges. Catherine Ginnas. Congratulations. Brock Bucico. Is Brock here? Colton Dyson Sam. Yes, Colton. Not here. Ben Laverdi. Ben here. Jack, the commentator. Jack here? Come on down, Jack. Congratulations. Nicholas Da Silva. Is Nicholas here? Bradford Denson. Is Bradford here? Garrett Deverio. Benjamin Farrar. Owen Griffin. David Ranajer. Is David Ranajer here? Jose Susa. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Let's give him another. Congratulations.
Kathy, is there any public comment? I'm sorry to start late. So, may I please have a motion to seal the executive session?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we will move on to the consent agenda. I'm just gonna read what that is so everyone understands. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be retained by the school committee and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a committee member requests, in which then the items will be withdrawn from the general order of business and considered in the normal sequence on the agenda. Consent agenda items are received and filed with no discussion or further action taken.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's recommendations and issues. Oh, but first, I would like to thank all of those who made donations and gifts to the district. I don't know if Dr. Bryce, if you'd like to go into specifics about what they're likely to use for, but I just, I know on behalf of the school committee, we would like to say.
I would just add to the chairperson's just recognition of the donations and gifts. We know that we had a exercise equipment donated to KMS, which will help to fill out our wellness room. We also had a donation for, I believe, art supplies for Mount Hope. And then we had a donation for Generation Citizen as they continue their work to learn how to advocate for ways to improve the community that our students live in. And so again, we're very thankful for the gifts and donations provided by either individuals or organizations in our community.
Yeah, and that was specifically for the Generation Citizen program. So now we can move on to superintendent's recommendations and issues.
Yes, recommendation 2020-1, that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent approved the request of three families to homeschool that showed in for the 2019-2020 year school year. Alright, so move.
Discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Recommendation 2020-2, that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the policy and curriculum subcommittee approved the first reading of the code conduct policy JFC. So move.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to give a, did you have a question?
Nope, I was gonna ask, can we give an overview of changes or wholesale?
Absolutely. So this has been a very long process, one that we started making before Dr. Bryce came. But I just want to first acknowledge all the work that Dr. Bryce and Dr. Sam have done to make this most awesome, I think, policy and document a reality. It's been, we've gotten information and feedback from administrators, from all stakeholders. I'm super proud of the work that's been done to make this happen. I feel like we've been really consistent and thoughtful in the way that we've spelled out what we expect from our students. And that we are also very consistent in whether our students do not meet our expectations, what will, if it's consistent and thoughtful, I'm super grateful. It's been from top to bottoms, we're a process, I think it's, it's almost completely been done from the biggest ones, a giant undertaking. It's, I think it's a great policy.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation 2020-3, that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the policy and curriculum subcommittee approved the first reading of the health and wellness policy JHCJ. So move for discussion.
Second.
Discussion. Marge, did you have a question?
I did. On four and six.
Okay.
And the reason I have a question is because of, I happened to read some of the wellness policies from other districts. And under four, it mentioned, mentions that a member of the school committee should chair the, but nowhere does it mention the superintendent should be a part of that committee. And the reason I say that is because in six, it says that building principals will work with the health and wellness subcommittee to document compliance with all provisions of the policy in order to assess the program and determine the areas in need of improvement. And the health and wellness subcommittee will conduct a review of this policy on a yearly basis. And I don't believe that a subcommittee of the school committee can tell anybody what to do. I believe it's the superintendent, according to all the policies that we've read, that direct the people who work for the district to implement the health and wellness policy. Am I not right in what we read? Aaron Corrigan. So I wonder where the superintendent sits in this. I don't have a problem with the body of the policy. I think it's great. I don't have any problem with that. I'm just worried about the fact that this should be coming through the superintendent, because we can't really tell the principal what to do, or any other administrator or employee at the district. We can only suggest to the superintendent, let the superintendent do it.
So, can I please? So, my understanding is that what happens with the health and wellness committee is that it's not a typical subcommittee, like personnel, budget, or policy? And we've been doing a lot of research on this to try to figure this out. So this was a state-mandated?
Right, I know that, but when the school committee person is chairing it, and the school committee person tells the Mount Hope High School principal that she needs to do this, that she can, it has to come through the superintendent.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm. It actually has to come through the school committee. So the, the health and wellness committee has to have a representative, which I'm assuming would be the chair, which is a member of the school committee, who then, you know, if they want to make a change to curriculum or whatever, they would then come before the school committee at a meeting like this one, present that, and then that would be a starting point. In my mind, and I think in what I've read in the law, that would then go to the policy subcommittee, at which the superintendent would be present and we would have that discussion there, but it all has to.
Yeah, I didn't see it that way. I really saw it as the superintendent being responsible for the curriculum and the content of what goes on in the school. And he reports it to us. We make recommendations and changes, but the ultimate responsibility lies with the superintendent. At least, that's how I.
So, Marge, I actually think that there isn't any daylight between the way that you're envisioning it working and the way that it is described as working. It might be just that maybe it's not written as clearly as it could be. Although, I hesitate to say it, because I know that there was an awful lot of work done in the writing. But the way that, and what Erin just described is right, there's no, there's nothing in this policy that is at least intended to communicate that the health and wellness subcommittee would give any direction to anybody. The only thing that the health and wellness subcommittee would do, and I guess maybe it's sort of evaluate, that's maybe tripping you up, not tripping you up, causing the confusion. They would look at what the policy says, and look at the way that the superintendent has led the district's implementation of the plan. And then they will review that policy in the context of that implementation to make recommendations to the superintendent and the school committee, or changes to the policy.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you on that, but that's not what it says.
So, can I draw everybody's attention to the second paragraph under six? That first sentence, that the superintendent, who are his or her designated, will be responsible for leading the district's implementation plan? I think part of my interpretation of a policy is not that the subcommittee will actually be directive of principals. So I do think to take Ms. McBride's comment into account, as well as Mr. Ramos, I think maybe we can, because this is first reader, maybe we, if we, someone were to make a motion, that we would add some clarifying language to clarify the position that this body, this particular subcommittee, would make recommendations. The recommendations would then have to go to the full committee. If the full, if the full school committee adopted those recommendations, it would then go to policy for discussion and the development of a plan.
I agree with that approach, I just wanna make sure that whatever provisions we make are addressed to the particular language that Ms. McBride is.
I just wanna make sure that in the end, it's the superintendent that's overseeing curriculum and, and the things. We write policy, but he oversees what goes on in the schools, and I just wanna make sure there's a connection there. I don't have the wording for it, I just know that Dr. Bryce is right, we could, we could pass it as a first reading and correct that language for the second reading, because the body of the policy is very good. And I don't, personally, I don't see any reason to change what he wrote. I just want a clearer path for how the changes happen. Is that?
I think that's a great idea, I'm just not clear on what changes in the language you're looking for, as someone on policy and curriculum. And I just, I just would, yeah. And you know what the line that, line that all these.
So, I just, Madam Chair, I just have a question and then maybe a statement. So, to Mrs. McBride, is the, is the concern that that second sentence there, the second paragraph of six, kind of doesn't end around of the superintendent? Because you brought that specific sentence up and says, building principals will work with the health and wellness subcommittee to document compliance. If you just remove working with the health and wellness subcommittee, does that, does that kind of?
I think that four and six can be combined.
Oh, okay.
As into one, this is who's going to be on the wellness committee, and this is the trainer, or the trail commander of our path way forward. Does that make any sense?
Because it appears that in six, we're talking about building principals documenting compliance with the policy in order to assess progress and probably efficacy, and determine areas in need of improvement, which is what it says. So, is it that the building principals need to work with the superintendent? Or is it just that the building principals will document compliance in order to assess progress?
Well, I would think that the superintendent would ask the principals for documentation of whether or not they're following this policy and how they're following it. And then the superintendent would have a discussion with the wellness committee on what the pros and cons are for what they have here, what's working, what's not working, and, you know, adjust accordingly. So I guess I'm flipping it.
So it might even be as simple as the superintendent, or his or her designated, will be responsible for leading the district's implementation plan. Building principals will report to the superintendent documented compliance with all provisions of the policy, da-da-da, something is about as annual of updating, something like that.
So, I think we can look at, I just think, like, I don't know if I'm missing something, but in my mind, if the wellness committee has to have someone here to relate to the school committee, and then take it to the policy and curriculum subcommittee, I'm not sure I understand what the concern is about the superintendent being left out of the mix.
Well, I don't, he doesn't come into the mix until the end. How can they, how can that subcommittee?
Because the school committee directs the superintendent at that point.
But how is that subcommittee going to know whether what they have proposed over here is working if they're not able to direct?
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
To ask the people in the buildings what they're doing, are they following the rules and regulations in the health and wellness policy?
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And then sit back with the wellness subcommittee and say, this works, this doesn't, and then we go through the.
What's interesting though is in the setup in the law, that's, the superintendent is not on this committee, so it's a hit, right? Like, but now, you're saying if.
But it was guidance, I think it was, well, it doesn't really matter, I just think that.
Yeah, well, let's have, let's have another look at it.
You have more power when you go through the superintendent, so if you want things to happen, this body decides that they should happen, and then you go through the superintendent to make sure they are happening.
So maybe language about intermediary or steps or something to clarify the type of.
Yeah, I think four and six and just, I mean, I think Dr. Bryce knows exactly what I'm talking about, but I don't wanna not pass the first reading, because the rest of it is great.
So, can I make a motion to pass the first reading with, with it going back to the policy and curriculum subcommittee for a look at the language in four and six?
So you're amending the motion?
No, I'll read, I'll draw my.
You made a motion?
I, I made it for purposes of discussion, so I'll draw it.
So you can try to. Amending the motion.
So now, I move that, I move that we accept, accept the first reading and send it back to the committee for some court changes on involving the superintendent and the chairman of the, the superintendent and the wellness committee.
I'll second that.
Thanks.
Recommendation 2020-4, that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the policy and curriculum subcommittee approved the first reading of the physical restraint and crisis intervention policy JHFBA. So move for purpose of discussion.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, yes. Marge? I'm looking at the exhibit, and the exhibit has a legal reference, but it just says Rhode Island physical restraint regulations, and it doesn't have the law cited. But the policy itself doesn't have the law or the legal reference where, that you have to cite to say where you got it from. So that's my only, that for the second reading, all those legal references need to be in there.
Dr. Sam, am I correct in remembering that this was a suggestion source that it came from, why? Uh, no, from Mary Mary.
This came from legal counsel, but it basically is based on the new physical restraint regulations.
Okay.
Yeah, on the health and policy, I just.
We just need to make sure that's.
Yeah, because the exhibit is something that actually a school committee doesn't have to vote on. So, if there were legal references only in the exhibit, we could be, I just think it would be nice to let everybody know what.
The legal reference should be on the page required, but it just doesn't carry or work, so it's not technically on the exhibit. And.
Should be down.
When, and our previous policy for physical restraint, it also just said physical restraint regulations, so I don't know if we can get clarification on.
It's the, I mean, it's not a statute, it's, it's the regulations that come out from the Department of Ed on what the new physical restraint policy is to have.
Are those regulations part of the Rhode Island court of regulations, or are they just a separate motion?
I'm not sure, it's in the, it's right in the, I'll get back to you shortly. Thanks, otherwise, no more, I don't have any more discussion.
I just was, if you might, provide a little bit of commentary on what's happening with this.
Absolutely. Based on recommendations that come from the state, we also from pride, we figured that we needed to tie up, kind of have a plan in place to help our students, or even de-escalation, if they are, there's a, let me see, they're destroyed. That's, that's the problem. We wanted to have a policy in place, making sure that not only district employees were properly trained, but that they were staying safe, as well as the students. So this also addresses how we're documenting reporting, if a district employee needs to help a student in this process. So that's basically what this policy covers. There's also information on how we're training staff, and also limitations to the policy.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Recommendation 2020-05, that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent approved the purchase of Bristol Warner Regional School District cafeteria hardware upgrade. So move.
Second.
Discussion?
So do we know, one is how much the equipment would cost, and then is it coming out of that enterprise fund for the lunch?
Correct. So, it is actually coming out of the enterprise cafeteria fund account, and the approximate total cost, we believe, is $16,000.
So, I don't know if you could just describe for the folks that are in attendance, where is that?
Yep. So, right now, the cafeteria equipment, there are a number of upgrades. Some of the upgrades are optical scanners. Some of the upgrades also include touchscreens, where students would be able to, or the people that are working on the cafeterias all across the district, are able to key in the items. And then lastly, there are pen pads, where the students punch in their lunch code, whether, whether parents put money on their account, or their account is underwritten because it's free and reduced lunch. The other issue that, or the other piece of equipment that we would purchase would be computers, because the computers currently are not able to be, I think they're Windows 7, which is not supported by Microsoft in any, any fashion. So, we recognize that we have a vulnerability, a security vulnerability, where those devices could, without being upgraded, open us up to people potentially hacking into the system. So, from a security standpoint, it's imperative that we replace this equipment, and we can do it out of an account that is fully funded, so it's not coming out of operating.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Grant?
Are these, are these devices across all schools, or just at the middle somewhere?
All schools.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation 2020-6, that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent approved the technology networking services contract with Velocity Solutions. So move. Second.
Discussion? I just wanna, so, one is, are we doing this sole source just for this school year?
So, we're doing the sole source just for the remainder of this school year, and we believe that the total maximum amount would be 30K. This is a opportunity to provide the type of support that we would get if we had a network manager. But we actually don't have a network manager, because we've tried, we've actually advertised and interviewed a number of individuals, and we were turned down multiple times due to the South. Right, so it's a competitive field. So it's a competitive field where our salary requirements probably don't match, um, private industry. Um, so we think this is another way to build internal capacity because the individual would work with our current staff. Um, and hopefully get our staff up to a level where we could then repost. And if we repost and staff apply, potentially staff could move into that. And then backfill the lower level position, which is easier and where our salary is more competitive.
Um, I have one more question. On the email, it said our school hourly rate and business hourly rate for Velocity. What did, what's the difference?
I don't know if there is a difference. I just thought it was, I thought the rate was one twenty-five.
I can add stat, Dr. Bryce.
Gross.
No, one was one forty-five, one was ninety-five. I only had one twenty-five.
I thought it was one twenty-five.
Sorry, need to give you a backup.
Um, Velocity Solutions Services, both businesses and schools.
Oh, okay.
He works for a lot of schools in Rhode Island. So his rate for schools is much more economical than for businesses.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bradshaw?
If we got other bids to, and we recognize that this bid is lowest, does it necessarily need to be sole source?
Yeah, so the reason why we went sole source is because the individual has experience working with our network. Um, he's been, uh, someone that has provided a level of support to the district over several years. So he already knows our network, uh, architecture or, or infrastructure. Um, and so that's why we went sole source as opposed to opening it up for multiple bidders.
Okay, 'cause I guess then, then the answer is that these were just estimates that people were providing. It did not go out for bids.
Correct.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation 2020 dash seven, that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent approved the 2020 dash 2021 M H H S program of study.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? And I wa- I do want to welcome, um, Assistant Principal Michelle King and Dr. Diviazian, Principal of Mount Hope High School, who are here to answer questions and give us a little presentation on this program of studies.
Thanks. Um, I'll just give, uh, Dr. DiMann to get over there, but I will just say, um, I am pleased once again to be here to present the program of studies for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. As you know, the program of studies, really, uh, the goal and intent and purpose of this document is to highlight and answer questions that families and students have, uh, to really ensure that we're providing the most accurate, concise information. Um, we want students at Mount Hope to be able to maximize their time in the year, to achieve at the highest level, progress through certain pathways and programs to the highest level. And so the program of studies really is designed to hopefully ensure that students can capitalize on all the opportunities that we provide, um, in a concise way, uh, make sure that they can see the relevant and authentic experiences we have. So that's, that's, as we go into developing and looking at revising the document, those are the things in mind as we go. So we can go ahead. Um, you know, again, to take you through the process, if you're not familiar, you know, we start this right, um, right towards the end of quarter one. We begin to evaluate programs. I mean, contact with department chairs and teacher leaders so that we can start to have conversations about courses that are running, new courses that we want to add, courses that maybe need to change a little bit. We're looking at pathways. School counselors are providing input regarding college career readiness and language related to that. Um, obviously speaking with, uh, other administrators and, um, at both in, in the school and at the district level, uh, till we get to a place where we have what we can consider a final draft. Um, all departments then get their final eyes on, their eye one last time on our final draft. Um, I presented Thursday night and, and I'm happy to show, share it again tonight. Um, so one of the things that I wanted to talk about is the highlights that we like to really emphasize through our program, um, our CTE pathways in engineering, computer science, and in business and marketing. Um, really highlighting both the real world learning opportunities, the internships that they provide, the opportunity for college credits through Project Lead the Way, um, and other dual enrollment courses within those, uh, then the school-based enterprises through H and M and DECA. We want to highlight both, um, the advanced placement courses that we offer, about twenty that we're offering currently here at Mount Hope. Interestingly, I did take a look at our five-year data to kind of see where we're at. Um, we've nearly doubled our enrollment in, um, AP courses, and we've moved from about a hundred and fifty tests to over three hundred tests taken last year. Um, currently, we have four hundred and forty-eight enrollments in AP courses. I hadn't, I haven't actually pulled out duplicates. As we know, um, many students, primarily eleventh, the twelfth graders are taking probably more than one, um, but at this point, they're a four hundred and forty-eight year old. So, um, we want to continue to grow that. Our advanced course, or not our advanced course network, but we're wanting, uh, to highlight advanced course network through the Prepare RI Network. Um, I, I said this Thursday night, it's sort of a hidden gem that we're really trying through the counselors to make students and families more aware of, um, opportunities to earn college credit, um, AP credit through, uh, we have two students who took an AP course at Barrington High School virtually. Um, students taking drone technology at New England Tech, et cetera. So, um, this is, this is another thing that we've tried to now highlight a little bit more. Our digital learning lab for flexible scheduling, both, uh, given the fact that we've had some changes to the schedule through, um, with that, we've been able to use our flexible learning, uh, flexible scheduling through digital learning lab. And it's also our opportunity for students to earn credits, uh, through credit recovery. And then again, our wide selection of, uh, credit elective offerings in all departments. Uh, we do have quite, um, quite an assortment. Big changes for the twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. It's kind of awkward to say that. I don't know if it's just me. Um, there are really no big or significant changes going forward. The biggest would be that the proficiency-based graduation requirement change is just that our last cohort of students has graduated under the old PBGR system. And we are now solely, um, all grade levels operating under the big three with civic and social responsibilities. And so that is the only language you'll see related to graduation requirements now is big three.
And Ms. King, does that include the portfolio?
That is the portfolio in addition to, but the portfolio is a large piece of that.
All right, so we're, I'm just bringing that up because I know that, uh, several of our school committee members have questions about that, so that's a big question I want to-
Okay, yeah. And so it starts in the freshman year with conversations, both in the freshman and sophomore year, progresses to actual presentations in the junior and senior year. Um, we made a small change to our ad drop period. The timeline for that was, um, had, had increased to fifteen days when we went to a block schedule. We were seeing kids, teachers were seeing students every other day. So we needed some additional time to make those assessments, uh, given the schedule we're in now. We feel that students are being seen five out of seven days in the rotation, and a change to ten days is ample time to make determination. Um, the advanced placement testing policy has changed, and that is directly related to College Board. Um, College Board now requires students to register for and pay for their AP exams in October or earlier. I think it was October this year, but it is at the beginning of the school year. That is a significant change from what we were doing or what College Board was doing last year and years prior.
And can you explain why they made that change if they've explained the-
I wish I could explain why. I've not, I've not seen any indication as to the why. Um, you know, we started getting indications that that change was going to happen about mid-year last year. So towards the end of last school year, I started to send out communications to families of upperclassmen, changes to AP policies coming. I kind of kept alluding to, there is going to be changes. The greatest impact will be to registration timeline. Um, and so that is now in fact in place. We had all of our students register at the beginning of the school year. One hundred percent of our students have registered, um, for, for our-
And we also offer the fee waivers.
Yeah, for, for AP. And as per policy, you know, students who qualify can get fee waivers. And obviously, um, difficulty paid for an exam would never prohibit a student from, um, taking the AP exam. All right, Miss Bradshaw just saying.
But it's clear that the change in the registration for the assessment is not our decision.
No.
But it is a College Board decision.
It is one hundred percent covered.
And if we, if we fail to adhere to that, is there, is there a penalty?
We can't offer the exam. So, I mean, the bottom line is we have to order all AP exams for all students taking AP tests by a certain date. And the only way we can do that is by knowing how many students and having them register. And now that registration is not only paper, the registration is online. So all students have to register for their AP exam through the College Board website. So it's really a, a-
You know, I, I do wonder, without having a clear background, I wonder if College Board is reacting in some ways to some of the, the, uh, the improprieties that they may have identified in AP exams as well as SAT exams, um, that if they have a longer runway, a, a longer window, they're able to more quickly, uh, identify if something is amiss. I, I would be, I-
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I would ask, could you just follow up for, for my own edification? I'll share with the school committee.
Sure.
Um, could you reach out to College Board and find out why they changed their policy?
So our contact is Bob Walcott, and so I can certainly reach out to him and see if he has any indications.
Pick up the phone call to you. I'm serious.
Well, I, I think Bob would be quicker, but I can try that.
And just keep, so it seems like there, there are significant changes to AP, um, with regard to when to get registered, how you're registering, um, those sorts of, do we think it deserves more than kind of a footnote at the bottom of, uh, uh, three larger columns here in the middle of nine to highlight that for our students?
So that AP, um, that particular test policy right there has been there. I mean, that location has been there. So the only thing we did is change, uh, one sentence about the registration piece. Um, I have been communicating that out, certainly, um, it, it's, I'm certainly open to changing or, or highlighting, um, the, the change, uh, because as I said, you know, we've been sending out that information since beginning of the year.
Teachers have communicated, counselors-
Yeah, we've asked teachers to add it to syllabi. It's been a, a full court press on that in terms of getting that out.
I mean, those in regards to that, um, so in addition to getting some clarification, um, it's very clear that it says, um, based on College Board policy. So let's just try to get a, a little bit more clarity around that. But that last sentence in that box, I think is troublesome. Failure to register for the AP examination will result in a schedule change or loss of AP designation. Explain that.
So, um, this has been in place for some time, and the rationale, it predates me. But the rationale for certain is that the expectation when taking an AP course is that you would be taking the AP exam. Um, it would be as if you were saying, I'm going to register for this class, but I'm going to tell you upfront, I'm not taking the final exam, but I do expect to still pass the class. So there, there is an expectation that this is the, the assessment for this course. Um, our ability to look at the AP data when students take the exam is, allows us to determine how effective our AP instruction is. Um, without students taking the AP exam or a significant number taking the exam, it would be very hard to evaluate our program or evaluate our instruction. Um, we would not know if we were adequately preparing students for that level of assessment. In, in fact, because it is a college-level course.
And do we have a limit on the number of AP classes we allow any student to take at one time?
Uh, we do not have a policy that says, you know, there is no limit, certainly. Um, I think that scheduling makes it prohibitive in terms of where they fall because most, most of our AP courses are singleton. So I think, but we have students taking as many as possible.
Could I make a suggestion?
Which is a lot.
That I would there, uh, along with the AP, I would make some sort of, I would put an asterisk in the chart at the top, and I would say something to the effect, any student seeking to take more than three AP classes and AP exams in one year, uh, needs, um, to consult with their counselor, um, and have it reviewed by, I, I think it should be reviewed by the administration. So that's either the, their assistant principal or the principal. So let's just make sure that everybody is aware about the, 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 the level of rigor students are about to sign up for, especially with the expectation that they also have to take the, the exam. Because I think taking the class is one thing, but then in May, when you've got four exams or five AP exams staring you in the face, I think in some cases, you know, s- maybe our students be, have, have sort of bitten off more than they can handle. So I just, we're not saying they can't do it. We're saying everybody needs to be aware of what they're doing. Um, and I think that's, that's an extra safety. We're not saying they can't do it, but let's make sure moms and dads-
Well, I certainly agree. You know, I, I know that our counselors are routinely counseling students, that they're looking at three or four, that that is a routine conversation that they're having in terms of looking at the rest of their, um, schedule. You know, we have students who by the end of quarter two, mid-quarter two, now are asking to drop AP classes. Um, I will say, you know, again, it's also case by case. We have to, you know, we have to look at students' well-being, students' health and all of that, and, and make exceptions to those.
Correct.
And I, and flexible on that.
And I think, I, I think the, the fact that our counselors are already doing it, but let's, let's-
But it speaks to the need.
Yep, let's verbalize it, let's speak to the need. But I, I think we are all concerned about the student, uh, who, you know, gets into the middle of the year, and the level of work is such that they didn't expect it. And so let's just make sure that we're all on board. We know that we've got, uh, very able students and capable students. But we also, I worry about, uh, the academic load and whether or not they're having any fun in their classes. Um, and you know?
Hey, you can have fun in AP classes too.
Well, you can, but I prefer you maybe take an art or a music or a fine arts class.
Find an AP course there too.
Well, exactly.
I have a question. This is King. My problem isn't that. My problem is that last sentence that says that if you don't register for the exam, and I brought this up last year, so I'll bring it up again this year. It will result in a schedule change or loss of AP designation. I think that all students have the right to take the AP class without taking the exam. It doesn't necessarily benefit some students to take the exam because they're not going anywhere with it. And so I wonder why, if I choose to take AP literature, why I have to then take the, the test? I mean, I, I'm challenged by AP literature. I want to take the course. But I know that when I go to the university that I want to go to, that they're not going to accept it as a credit. That the most they're going to give me is maybe a rape bump to a higher level of-
Yeah, case by case.
The, the coursework at U R I, yes, they'll give me credit for, but not, not at all school. So why is it that they are sort of now, we, we said last year that they had to pay for it. We said you can't say that. So this year, it just says, it sort of affirms that if you don't-
Okay. Well, and I will say this, um, we have-
So when I signed my child up for AP English.
Yeah.
And I said, no, my child's not going to take the test because doesn't need the test.
Right.
And then you say, well, then your child can't take AP English.
Right.
Then I have an issue with that.
Well, and again, I think that there's, there's a credibility issue. There is an equity issue. So AP courses have a higher weighting in the GPA world. Um, and so, you know, I, I've been doing this a little while, and I do see the game that sometimes is played. And so, you know, I've been doing this a little while, and I do see the game that sometimes is played. And I'm not saying any person would do that, but I know it exists. So, we do have to, for students to be taking on the responsibility of a college-level course to get the extra weighting to their GPA, there are some expectations that go along with it. I will also say conditionally, we have not had students refuse or not want to, and it is evaluated case by case. But there have been, last year, we had a couple of students in a particular AP course that were not, that felt not adequately prepared. And so, we did make a decision and allowed those students to not sit for that exam. But again, I go back to my original statement that I stand behind is that it would be as if I'm saying, I'm entering your class, I want to take your class as I find it challenging, but I don't want to take your final exam. But I still want to pass. And I just think that that's not what we're also saying either. There is an expectation that goes along with that weighting.
There is when there's money involved. And that'll take me to another class that you have here, but-
Sure. And again, that-
We found some interesting, got some interesting things with the, with the policy on field trips that have taught us, at least taught me, some of the, some of the views that people in our community have about whether or not they can afford to go on trips and how they handle it. And I don't think that paying for a test should be a prerequisite for being in the course.
And again, if there's a difficulty in paying, we've had families that have expressed, my son is taking four AP classes, I can't pay for all four. There are fee waivers, and there are ways for us to, you know, acknowledge and pay for those. We have the ability. No student is denying access to a test for inability to pay. And that's been our, that's been our stance since, for as long as I've been here and probably won't be. So, there's never been a denial based on weight.
No, I haven't.
I have, there are a few other members have questions.
Yeah.
I'm just going to squeeze in super fast because it goes off whole bunch of. So, I just want clarification. Is, so is that a school policy or is that an AP policy?
That is a school policy. I'm not showing-
I remember when I was in school, I really, I remember AP, AP tests.
Emotional? Yep.
So, I think some AP tests and others, I took the classes, but I didn't take the test. And my second question is-
Yeah, it varies by school.
What, so when you say it's like taking a class and then not having to take the final exam, but don't, don't the classes have regular exams as well? I'm assuming there's a final exam in the class.
There are assessments along the way, and typically it varies from course to course. Some of the AP courses may have a final, some may have a final project. There are other assessments for sure.
So, is this, is this kind of a thing that's in place because there are those top, top students who are competing? I mean, that's not against each other. Because I know you said that some people play the game, and I'm just trying to have an understanding of why the test part would be optional.
If I can clarify for you, I think that we help in that, first, I think it's important that there are very, very, very few students, happens once in a while, that a student enrolls in an AP course and does not want to take the AP exam. So, that happens very, very rarely. And we do look at those on a case by case basis because everyone is completely different than the other. As it, I think as it states in that last line, they can still, all students can still take the AP course. They're welcome to take the AP course. If they don't take the exam, they would just lose the AP designation, and it would just turn to an honors-level designation, which basically is just the, you know, the weighting through of their, that goes into their GPA. So, it'd be a small change in weight, but students can still take it if they opt in to.
So, does the AP examination grade play into their grade in the class?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a-
No, no, no.
No, it doesn't, they don't find out until after the exam.
So, then that confuses me even more.
Well, so a couple of-
Does it play into the grade in the class at that level?
No, it is, it is, we use it in two ways. One, it is a way for the student to determine how they fare against their peers all over the country, that, you know, whether or not they earn a three, four, or five. So, I think it's the self-check. And the student can also use it for certain schools that will accept that credit as probably not a credit in the major, but as an elective credit, right? And some universities won't accept them anyway regardless of whether you score a five or not because they just feel like, we don't want to accept the credit. I think for the school's perspective, and Michelle mentioned this earlier, Ms. King mentioned this earlier, the idea that the school can use that to determine whether or not the quality of instruction in that course is high enough that the students are able to meet that standard of three, four, or five is valuable. It's not the only thing, but it is, it is something of value.
And I would also add that given our new accountability system, it is one of the measures for student post-secondary success, and it is used in evaluation of our high school.
I mean, I think we, I think there might be two easy twits. Number one, that last sentence that says, failure to register for the AP examination will result in a schedule change, I would eliminate the schedule change, right? If you register, we're going to keep you in the class, but if you then tell us you're not going to take the test, we're going to change your designation, right? So, even though you're in the class, you are getting the honors designation. And I think we, you know, until we, we, the school committee and the superintendent, we work together and we review sort of the whole GPA issue writ large, I think that might be the, this might be the stopgap, right? But the problem is, what you really will have is you'll have people that will take the class for the weight, get the credit, but not take the exam, right?
Okay, Mr. Rehbockson's got it. And then Mrs. Elsberg.
I'm a little bit confused. I think that we're sort of talking about a lot of different things that are not necessarily related to each other. The concerns that I've been hearing from fellow school committee members about the drop in the AP designation if you don't take the test seem to me to come from a place of concern about taking away options from students that don't have a particularly devoted need. And one of the things that you've said a few times, I don't need to be attacking you, buddy. I know that you're working very hard to do the right thing for students and for the school districts all collectively. But this is something that happens very rarely, where we have students who are taking the, taking the class and decide they don't want to take the exam. And I think, as you've said on a couple of occasions, we evaluate on a case by case basis whether to allow people to not take the exam. But then we have language in our program of studies that is, that is not permissive. It's directed, it says will, doesn't say may result in loss of designation. I think that that is misleading even perhaps, based on the way that you described it actually works in practice. And I would encourage us to change it to may instead of will. In that way, we can perhaps balance the concern that exists about people attempting to gain a system, which I'm going to speak to in just a second. But again, you know, real reasons why it might not be appropriate. Like, for example, as Dr. Bryce said at the very beginning of this conversation, the concern about people who get in holes and things and then realize they've bitten off more than they can chew, it might be that, you know, in order to get them back onto being able to chew everything that they've bitten off, it's just not having them be stressed out about taking the exam that they thought they were going to be ready for. But there's also not necessarily any reason to eliminate the AP designation because we do have, and I understand that there's a different look at the GPA thing altogether that might come down the line. But currently, we do have at least slightly varying weights between an honors class and an AP class when it comes to GPA. And presumably, that's because there's something qualitatively different about the level of competition and the rigor of the instruction within that class. So, if they're in that class and they don't end up taking the AP exam, which has nothing to do with their grade, if they still achieve a grade in that class with everybody else that is based on all the same criteria that all of the rest of the students took, then there's no reason that they shouldn't have the same bump off associated with their GPA because the only thing that's different is something that has nothing to do with what happened in that class. And to the last point, and to the last one, about wanting to ensure that we can have enough people who are taking the test so that we can determine whether or not the level of rigor in our instruction is sufficient to achieve what you need to achieve on those tests to score the passing scores. And if that becomes a problem, then maybe that's something that we can address. But I think that that perhaps sells our students and families a little short. I think, as you've said, most people want to take the AP exam. I don't think we're going to run into a sample size issue. Closing the question, it was more of a speech, but-
That's okay. That's great points, Sam.
I know, I would say I would take may because maybe if there's somebody, if there's a reason why. I would, I don't think that we should remove the designation. I don't think that we should ever remove the designation.
So, should we just remove the sentence?
Let's hear from Ashila. So, my, my concern from all this AP talk is, what about the other kids? I think, I mean, I don't see anywhere in here, like, I see a wire in class, but I don't see where they can get a certificate. So, you know, maybe college isn't their thing. And what happens when they graduate? How are we going to make them successful citizens? I mean, I see very limited kind of for that scale of a child. And I'm saying we need to look at, I don't think we do a great job of, when these kids graduate, they already have a certificate to be either a plumber or an electrician or some other pathway that this, these kids have. I just, we talk about all these AP students. I'm not an AP student, and I'm successful. So, I just feel that it's not all about, I feel like we have other kids, and I want to make sure that we're providing these other students with a jumping toe. So, where, you know, the kids that graduate from Mount Hill High School have a better advantage than the kids that graduate from sports center of Marion. So, how do we get that?
Yes.
And what's that look like?
So, I actually think the program of study is comprehensive in the fact that it covers a number of courses that will do exactly what the school committee member wants, which is, its focus is not only on AP courses. If you go back two slides, I think, it says, we only have 20 AP classes, right? I don't know how many courses in the program of study. Like, that's one of the numbers that I didn't add, but I'm assuming 600?
No, there's 600 sections.
Okay, how many courses?
I don't know how many courses.
It'd be interesting to find out.
But we have 662 sections.
Right, so 662 sections, right? How many courses, we can find that out. But, but the reality is, the reason why we're having the conversation about AP is because we do know for some of our students, AP is their pathway.
And I understand that, but it's like the last year was all AP too. And I just, I'm concerned with like, I'd like to see like a graph, how many kids are AP? How many kids are, and what are these kids doing that are not AP, not going to college? How are we preparing them?
Well, I think, I was just-
Right, so I think the other thing that the school committee will see as we present the budget is part of what I shared today in the communication about the budget process, right? That we actually already have two state-approved CTE career technology programs. One is engineering, the other is business, marketing, and communications. We are going to spend next year bringing construction technology online. When we, Diane and I were emailing Wayne Hook Lima, we think we have, we need one more course to do that. We're also going to break next year. The other course we're going to try to break online is-
Cybersecurity?
Cybersecurity, right? So, it's the last course. We've got an instructor, but we've got to get that instructor to get the course. And so, what that does is, that creates four more pathways for our young people because just as you mentioned, I am concerned that we don't have numbers on how many kids in each pathway, how successful are they? What are they doing after they leave? And so, the one pathway that we, that was mentioned, could you go back?
Sure.
Could we go back to the slide that talks about the number of AP classes in that program underneath that advanced network?
Yep.
Yeah, so right there.
All right, I'm good, I'm all right, got it?
Yep, so that advanced course network, which is a really interesting collaboration of resources that students here at Mount Hill and any other high school around the state can participate in. I think the number of participants is four?
We have five.
Oh, sorry, five. Well, we have, we have a thousand kids in the high school. Our job has to be to do a better job working with our school counselors, working with students and parents so that everyone can start to identify their pathway. We get numbers on where they are, and we are monitoring them. We don't want the pathways to be fixed, which means if you get in like a maze, we don't want you to get in and you have to stay there. In a perfect world, we want you to dabble in the advanced course network. We want you to dabble in the advanced placement. And we want you to dabble in CTE. So that when you walk out, you've got, you know that you can do college-level work, but you also know that if you want to go into industry, you can do that as well.
So, if there's a kid that has like a whatever, not doing well in school, you could take him or her and put them in that pathway to try? Like, is that what, I mean, both his and or?
So, I would, the reason why I wouldn't phrase it that way is because historically, that's what people have thought. People have thought that the vocational pathways are only for kids who are not doing well in school. What we now realize is that the students that do well in the CTE pathways are the very same students that are doing well in these other pathways. What they really need is, they need a reason, a real-world reason why geometry matters, why algebra matters.
And we're making sure we're getting every child and we're not giving-
So, I can't say that we're making sure at this time, but we have a mindset and a plan to get every child into a pathway.
Okay. And what I would say is, with the implementation and rollout of the Individualized Learning Plan, that is yet another tool that now counselors are working with students from grade nine on in terms of identifying just that, from interest surveys to career searches to those types of sort of delving into various areas where it does begin to get the counselors aware of their kids' passions or interests or destinations a lot sooner. And so, as we continue to develop our plan with the IOP, with the Individualized Learning Plan, and how we're really going to continue to integrate that through advisory into courses, et cetera, we'll see that even more.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add one more piece. Our goal is to have every student graduate with either college credits or an industry credential. So, they're either college-ready or work-ready.
And in a, in a perfect world, it should be both.
Yep.
It should be both, right?
I also just want to be careful not to make this like AP kids versus CTE kids because I think we just haven't gotten to that part yet where those courses are kind of covered and that, and that this is more, like, what we're all talking about right now is kind of a little off-topic, but totally related in that it's a district's goal to make sure that all of our kids are getting what they need, no matter what their interests are, what their levels are. We have to prepare them for life after, so we kind of do go down the AP path.
We get stuck here, but it's also at the very end of the class.
Last year was the same, so I think everyone got stuck on that.
AP tends to be pretty definitely.
It's predictable.
It's radical, it's a third rail, it can kind of cause issues.
Yeah. Every year.
Can I ask a question on a different topic?
Yeah, and then let's maybe let them kind of get through.
This is a topic that's, the change to the ad drop period.
Yep.
In that, it says that students who are allowed to drop a course will get a W on their high school transcript.
That's only if it's after ad drop. So, if a student decides to drop a course-
After the 12th, 13th day.
Yeah, and typically, it's more like into quarter two where we're going to start assigning the W.
But my other, the other part of that sentence is, children, students who are removed from a class for disciplinary reasons after- for disciplinary reasons after the deadline get a W for that class as well. So I wonder why? It says, it's on page eight.
Yeah, I'm looking. I'm just, I never, where's that? That last paragraph, is it large?
Yeah, in the middle of eight, above Mount Hope High School currently offers the following course.
It says, it's in.
Oh, okay, yep. I see it.
And I'm, I'm just curious, when you remove a student from a class for disciplinary reasons, you have other things that the student needs to be doing and getting a W on their transcript.
So typically one of two things is going to happen. Either it disappears from the transcript altogether, which is not something you want to do once they've had grades assigned to them. So we need to put something from a, uh, a reporting standpoint to the, for data upload. So we need to have something, um, assigned to that field in our student information system.
So this is.
Maybe we do base again, because it will, we say many?
Well, I, I mean, I think this is another one of those situations. I think, I think you, you try to take into account every single possibility and, but this is such an outlier. I can't imagine that we have a, probably more than one or two a, a year of students that we remove from a class with this one.
And what I would say is typically if they're removed from a course for disciplinary reasons, they're being transferred into another course of the same.
Right.
So there is no W. It's just a transfer.
I, I would probably strike that because I just think, I, I think it's more, right? We're leaving kids in class. If there's a discipline issue, we're going to handle it in a, in a number of ways, uh, through the code of conduct, with the student advocate, working with the administration. We're going to try to get that student back into class, right? And not use, we're going to remove you, uh, if it's a behavior issue.
Typically it's a, yeah, typically it's a transfer from one teacher to another if it's, if there's discipline.
Well, yeah, or maybe there, and, and we do have this where sometimes there may be conflict between the student and teacher that we attempt to resolve and we can't. Then, then that might be, uh, that might be a rationale to transfer the student to another section.
I'm not questioning the rationale, I'm just questioning the W for.
Yeah.
But do we give Ws?
We do put assigned Ws for students who withdraw halfway through or withdraw after ad drop out of school.
I'm just worried about taking it out of work.
They're only taking, only taking messages in the area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, we've added two courses to performing arts.
Michelle, I'm sorry, one second. I did notice that Mr. Bento had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go on, sorry.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Is there a max that you have, uh, number of students in an AP class?
In an AP class? Nope. It's, I, well, I mean, it's our contract limit, 28.
Okay, so there, there's no issues as far as filling. I guess my only question was, is if you're going to allow students to take AP and then they decide not to take the AP test, you bump them down, but give them honor so they're disqualified? Are you, did, did?
Boxing out kids you want to take these?
Yeah, did you bump others out that way?
Yeah, I mean, certainly in the, that may be the case in things like AP Euro, which is typically a well.
Requested.
We, it's a heavily requested course, so we usually can't run all the sections that are requested. So yes, that's possible. And other courses that are not as heavily requested, it wouldn't necessarily be the case, but there are some.
I, I don't know if that's just some of your work, but you guys as counselors, as you get like number of students that want to go three, four AP classes, but you get that one or two students that are just looking to take one or two, but they get bumped out, I don't know if, you know, based on GPA, whatever.
That's a good point.
That is a good point.
New courses?
New courses, uh, improv, uh, in the theater department and intro to songwriting and music. Um, they're new and we're going to see how they, um, how they do. And then just made some general formatting changes, really just moving a couple of things around.
I have another question.
Yes, sure.
There's a, um, a course in here for writing, so URI writing course.
Yep.
It's part of the curriculum as well. Uh, but the cost to the students is $150 plus textbook.
Only if they're, um, interested in getting the EEP credit, the college credit. They don't have to pay that. They don't have to get the credit.
Why wouldn't they take it if they didn't want the credit?
Maybe they're interested in the course. It's something that.
When we said, I thought we had a cooperative type of learning process where students could take courses from university and, uh, be able to, um, get college credit for it. And I don't ever remember seeing, and maybe I'm wrong, but the, the children, for example, take a course at Roger Wayne, do they pay for that course?
Yes.
If you want the college credit, you have to pay for the credits to the college. For the EEP courses that are in here. I will say however, we've learned that college algebra, there is no cost. Right? That's the one that Wayne was talking.
We're still, we're still working on the details. I wouldn't guarantee that.
The, the college algebra, the one that ran this year?
The current one, but not, we don't know that here yet.
No, okay. So that one, there may or may not be anything associated, but.
I just, I have an issue with the fact that you offer a course in the program of study that costs a student, uh, more than what they would be doing going to school by a year.
I don't, I, I mean, I don't know if that's more than what they would pay at college.
So could we just, we, we're probably not going to have the answer right now. Let's do this. Let's just, let's just start it and let's just check, right? And so I'm actually on the dual enrollment. It might be helpful if, because if we think about, uh, CCRI, I'm assuming that the programs that, the classes at CCRI come without a tuition cost, but maybe they have like a lab fee or an equipment fee. On page nine, where it talks about dual enrollment. Um, why don't we sort of do a bullet and, and I don't want to mess up your formatting, but I, I do wonder about CCRI, Johnson and Wales, um, as, as whether or not there's any, uh, tuition fee associated, non-activity fee. And then.
Yeah, it looks definitely like all the URI EEPs have the $100, $150 fee associated.
And you wonder why, and okay, so then the question is, should we be pushing students or sort of advocating for students to take that if there's a comparable course at, at Johnson and Wales or CCRI that comes without a cost or a non?
Right. And also typically with these, not only is the, I mean, you would only pay the fee if you achieved a score of B minus, I believe is the qualification. If you don't score a B minus, you're not going to be awarded the college credit. So that's, it doesn't apply.
Something to think about.
Okay.
Yep. And by the way, and you've mentioned songwriting, like.
Introduction to Songwriting.
People's, it are Barry Manilow coming out.
Coming out.
I write the song.
I write the song.
Sorry, we're, we're dating ourselves.
We'll write that. So.
For the record, I have no idea what he's talking about.
He didn't know. Oh, wait, does anyone know? Ryan, Ryan, you can say that for us.
Yeah, I hope it's not.
Ryan can say that. Or he thinks he can. He says he can.
One point in time.
I'll bring the piano in.
Okay. And so lastly, just, um, pushing out communication and how we're going to communicate this with our community and families. Um, we'll begin, we'll begin first with grade level presentations here at the high school. Um, counselors will do their, and they do grade level presentations specifically so that they can target specific needs and, um, goals of certain grade levels. We're going to get department chairs and then school counselors to KMS. We, once that happens, we'll coordinate an evening event, which will be publicized and held here for KMS and Mount Hope families, as we did last year. Um, and continue to, to communicate through our mass communication system. Um, and then, uh, if the ball goes well, as it did in the last couple of years, our counselors will be able to have one-on-one meetings with all of their students before we walk out the door and.
Excited.
Yes. And that is your 2021 program studies.
Thank you so much.
It's 2021.
Okay, Marta has a question.
I have a few.
And then I will thank you for using.
All of these particular questions fall under the honor roll and class rank.
Okay.
And the reason they do is that I see, and I'm supposed to put this politely and nicely, but I see a whole page in the Phoenix of children with honors and high honors in our high school. And then I get the, the reports on how they're scoring. And I wonder why that doesn't jive with the full page of honors. So I looked at your requirements and on the honor roll, to be on the honor roll, you have to get a 3.0, which means you can get two A's and two Cs.
Correct. Um, however, let's make sure.
That we need to have about, about, it's almost, for me, for me personally, and if this annoys people, I don't care, but it's, give them a medal because they participated in school.
No grade level, then a C, so yes.
Why, I don't know. No, I, I don't care. I, I believe that in order to be on the honor roll, you need to be doing honors things and Cs are not honors things. And, and, and I, and I have a, a problem that it's a public perception that why do we do, we do so well in giving them all of these, um, touchy feely things about their academics, but then they're not succeeding?
They're trying to work on SAT. They're trying to work on SAT scores.
Specifically.
SAT tests.
Think about that. I mean, think about how can we fill up a whole page in the newspaper, but we can't, we're looking to be proficient at five and five. I, 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 it doesn't jive for me.
Top five.
No. And, and the, he, um, Dr. Bryce said we were going to talk about class rank and I'm glad because class rank can kill you. When you're applying to school, it could. And a lot of schools down don't even do it. So that's a discussion.
Yes, I, I, I've made my, my opinion of that clear. I, I personally am not a fan.
But, but, but my concern also is that then when we get to the National Honor Society and you have, you, um, you have to have at least a what?
4.0 weighted. Correct, weighted.
Um, the state honor society is a 3.3.
3.3, unweighted.
Right, unweighted. So then we get a half a page of children that are in this honor society, or this honor society, or this honor society. Where do our scores reflect that? Got to ask that question. And it's not a discussion for tonight.
No.
But it's a discussion that we have to have about how we're really looking at what we're doing. Because I, I'm uncomfortable with this.
Well, it is a conversation for another time, which we began last year. I think you were in the room. Yes, we were. It was, it was, um, I can't remember what point last year, but we did talk about this because none of it aligns. Like the, the, what it takes to make honors and high honors doesn't align at the middle school with the.
Right.
What, what it is at the middle school doesn't align with what it is at the high school. And then other districts don't align. And then with, you know, ranking and weights and grades and GPAs, that. Michelle was saying that often by the time the kids send all their stuff to, uh, colleges, if they're going to college, they recalculate everything anyway. So it's just all kind of, I don't want to say arbitrary, and maybe that's too skeptical, but.
Right. But we have a very small state and there are very, I, I'm not going to say, because I don't know the number, but there are few high schools that all agree on their weighting and ranking system, which is why a 4.0 at Mount Hope is not the same thing as a 4.0 at Cumberland or Lincoln or anywhere else. It, it's not.
And I think that's.
We have A pluses. Some people, some schools don't have A pluses. You know, how design equality points.
I wonder if this might be, um, a topic that we want to bring to a school committee workshop. And let's just start, start having the conversation, uh, because it's not something that can be, be easily done in one session. And, and it's probably going to take, right? So we, we had some initial conversation that you would have to implement something like this over a period of years, because there are some, like you don't want to, you don't want to impact students that are already in the pipeline, but you have to start at some place. And you'd probably want to start with an incoming freshman class that has enough time to be aware of the changes, even though they won't. So they'll be aware of the changes, but they won't really understand the changes because they haven't really impacted them.
Exactly.
But you want to.
That's, we want to get.
Exactly.
And I think what I found out is I, I thought when we started to talk, I thought, oh, well, this is like, it'd be kind of an easy thing to clean up and, and, and then, and then it was just layer after layer.
And, and it has a very clear constituency. That will come out and will advocate in opposition to changes, uh, because it, it benefits some kids. Right? And so we have to realize that and we have to make sure that as we explain it, we explain that our goal is to, to, to benefit all students, not just some.
And it will be, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just saying, it will be important at that point in whatever workshops, over time, when we start to look at community information, really involving the higher institutions. Because when they're involved and their commissioners, coordinators start giving the information and saying, we recalculate, your GPA isn't used here, um, then that has greater weight than if we said.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, we, we had this discussion earlier in a meeting and, um, right now, as we speak, there are eighth grade parents who already figured out what their kids were to take so that they can take the calculus honors at the end or whatever else it might be. The, the courses that have got the APs, the whatever it might be. We can't change it now. That change is going to take four years to change. And as we say, we're going to change it before, before this year. Uh, there, right now, as, as, as we speak, they, they all know which courses are important to take. We're not, poor Erin didn't know that this, this process went on with some kids and parents who have already figured out who's going to be the valedictorian and they're only in grades, you know? Um, so we have to worry about it. Now, the other thing is, I'd like to eliminate all weights, well, class weights and grade weights. I don't agree with any of them. I think we should go back to the, what, you know, we can compare apples to apples. We can do that later, right? Um, the other thing is, and I want to bring up at this meeting, we, we have discussed it and I want everybody else to know, that if you look at the National Honor Society and you look at the Red Island Honor Society, there's a big difference there, all right? The, the National Honor Society, a kid could actually have a 4.35 whatever, right? And not make the honor society just because the person is not that nice of a person, right? That's the best way I can tell you.
I, I would say it a little differently.
Yeah, well, I, I say, I say that, right?
He's very diplomatic on this.
And, and the, um, in the Red Island Honor Society, you don't have that now.
Red Island Honor Society is strictly an honor roll, where National Honor Society is much more and relies on character, leadership and, and service.
And I want people here to understand that's what it is. I mean, you read it, but you don't understand.
Your GPA is your invitation to National Honor Society, but then you have to do more.
That's right. Um, rank your class the same way. I wish it was just by, by those straight numbers, no weights, and here it is. Because then, then a person who is that path for industry could actually become the valedictorian. Right now, it is impossible for that person to do. They cannot become a valedictorian in this school if they're in that path. That's the big difference.
That's interesting.
Right? So I mean, that, that's why I, I want no weights. And then those people that take it, those higher level courses, they can get it. I have another question for you. I, I was looking at the languages. Are any of the languages honors languages?
The AP only.
So, so, so a person taking.
Foreign languages.
Spanish, right?
Yep.
Is, is, it's not an honors course?
No.
Do you think it should be? And the kids go to.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Right? And the other thing is, telling you, Erin, is the fact that a kid who's taking, are we offering algebra in the eighth grade right now?
I think so. Is there an algebra lesson or is there algebra?
Yeah, there is.
That first, those kids are in algebra in the eighth grade are one leg above everybody else. Because when they come to this high school, they're going to take al, algebra honors. Everybody else who takes algebra will go with our honors. So they already are getting a weight.
They're getting a weight in the freshman class that those other kids are not getting.
That's what I'm saying, about certain people know that this is happening. I told you about the dean of students, right?
Yes, yeah, I saw that. Thank you for that.
All right. Oh, I know. Caliper territory. Where do I read that? College preparatory, where do I mean that, and how do I find it?
College prep?
Yep.
What the levels are?
Yep.
On the description of that level that we're giving.
Yeah, there is.
It's on page nine.
Last year was that all courses that aren't honors or AP are college prep.
That's correct.
There's a chart.
So all of our courses should then be not like.
A regular English, a college prep English, and honors English, and an AP English. It's college prep English, and honors English, and an AP English.
Now, where do you say that they're college prep course?
Correct.
For these courses, so they, they really don't know.
That our standard course is a, is a college prep.
All of our courses are minimally preparing students for college.
So, all right, could I then say that all of the language courses are on, are, are college prep?
That's correct.
So if that, those courses will be weighted at one point one?
That's correct.
And remembering that always the weighted system.
Right, but that's true, that is, yeah, absolutely.
So all courses are weighted at?
Yeah.
Every course is weighted, that's correct.
But there's no, there's no course that's the baseline?
College preparatory is your baseline.
Are we at one one?
It has a weight of one point one.
There's no one.
So if you, so, so at a minimum, you get all A's, you're getting a four point one GPA, not a four point O GPA. At a minimum, if you get all A's, you're getting a four point four GPA, not a four point one GPA.
One weighted, four point O weighted would be four.
Four.
Four, yeah.
That means, that means US History One, grade nine, is a college prep course.
Yes, a college prep.
Now, does every kid in the school have to take US History?
Yes.
Yes.
So they're all in the college prep here, we're not, all of our schools, all of our freshmen right now, are college preparatory schools.
Except for those who are taking US History One honors.
So. So we don't have any career oriented kids?
So could, could I give you a little?
They have to take their core classes also, I think, is the, right?
So in some schools, in some schools, what we've seen are the schools who say, we have standards, we have honors, then we have college prep. What we have done is we've said, all of our, all of our classes are designed to instill the skills that students would need if they're going on to CCRI, URI, or any other institution. And so that's the, that's the floor. So we should not be upset that, that our classes are being taught where we have expectation that all of our kids are going to at some point matriculate to two or four-year colleges. I think the point that you're trying to make is, are we doing a good enough job of sharing that information, and are we differentiating between that, that, that first standard and the honors and the AP? And, and I would argue that that is, again, stuff we need to look, look at during that workshop.
The other thing I wanna make a point of is the fact that we're talking about this right now, and we can't even think, think about instituting, you know, not committing to this program, following program.
Oh.
So it, it's not even twenty twenty-one, it's more like twenty-one, twenty-two, we can't even think about this.
Absolutely.
I have one more, one more question on that whole area of grades and stuff. And it's something probably for another day, but I brought it up before, I've won it and I've lost it, and I'm gonna try again. You're absolutely silent in this course book about what happens with failing grades and extracurricular activities. You talk about all of the other things that happen with marking system and grades and kind of changes, but you don't talk about what happened in terms of what kind of grade point average you have to have to participate in extracurricular activities. I don't believe you should be allowed to fail, but I believe the policy now says you can't fail and still participate, and I think it's a discussion for another day, but it needs to be somewhere that parents understand what, what it implies.
So it, it is part of our student handbook, academic eligibility, there is a section on that in the student handbook, it's not in here, I agree, but it is in the student handbook.
Sure.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, then I'd like to ask that this school committee have a workshop on why we allow our children to fail to courses and to still participate in extracurricular activities? Well, you allow them, they have to go to after-school programs, but those aren't listed here either.
Are you talking about athletics?
Their recovery course, and if you, if you're going to, going to an act, after-school activity, extracurricular activity, whether it's art or music or sports, you're allowed to fail and still go to those. But you have a plan for it, but it's not here, and I personally don't think that you should be allowed to fail and participate, but I think that it's fine that we had a discussion about that, because the argument, the argument was made that those are the rules of the Rhode Island Ex-Plastic League in terms of failure, well, those may be the rules, those are the, those are the minimums for.
That's right, yes.
I think that, I'd like to bring it up again, that we can raise those rules, and I also think that we ought to be looking at other extracurricular activities as well, because we're not just talking about, you get to play football with two F's, we're talking about, you get to, you know, go to Disney World and play in Marching Man, same, same kind of criteria, but I think it's a discussion for a workshop, not a discussion for here, except that it ought to be noted somewhere that there, that these kinds of things can happen, and some of these are sort of extracurricular, particularly when you're taking man, or you're taking some of the others, and it's required that you march into parade, get a parade, but you can't march to the parade, it's cause you failed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly think that a workshop is, it is another topic for a workshop, but I, I do think Ms. McBride brings up an issue that we gotta address, that I do not see, that I, I don't see it in the program of study, which is, what is our, if not even a policy, right, cause I don't think we have the policy on extracurricular. What's our practice? Or extracurricular, or academic eligibility?
Is that a school committee policy?
I didn't think it, I thought it was a, which, which, if it's not a school committee policy, then it's a practice, right? So then, some, somewhere we need to, to note that for the upcoming year, so that people are aware of it, even as we seek to start having discussions about, can we strengthen it, can we change it? The, the last thing that I would say on this topic, I am, so I, I think I'm a very strong advocate for high school and, and middle school athletics. However, I want to just share with the school committee that I will always be concerned if athletics seem to be moving the organization in, in directions and in ways that work in opposition to our focus on academics, right? Cause it's academics that, that, academics is the reason why we're all sitting on this, on this diet, the, the reason why we have this opportunity, and, and the reason why our, our children are gonna be successful. And so I, I do think we have to, we like athletics for the, the, the things it provides, the, the opportunities and experiences it gives young people, but our first priority has to be academics, and somehow we need to do a better job of balancing the two.
But Dr. Bryce, it says, for example, first grade, or ninth grade, nine to twelve, string ensemble, you have to perform at school community functions throughout the year as an assessment for your grade. So you're failing English, but you still have, you're still out in the public doing things because you're part of the string ensemble, and that doesn't make sense to me either.
That was a large, I think, pretty big discussion several years ago, because it is a performance of part of the curriculum, so I agree with you, it's a much bigger, worthy conversation.
Well, I, I think so, because I understand what, what some of the other extracurricular activity groups are trying to do, and, and they're, they're good things, but when you make it part of the curriculum to pass that class, but you're not passing English or algebra or history, why are you out in the community when you should be getting either recovery help or being at home doing your homework and getting your grades back up? So while it helps children stay at school, it doesn't help them graduate, because you don't talk about in this, like you fall behind if you're a freshman for the second year or a freshman for the third year, because you don't have enough credit, but you're still taking these courses. Where are we working on that? So yes, I think it's for bigger.
I'm gonna help this discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, and Mr. Cabral, you have a question, right?
Yeah, could you turn to page fourteen, please? Fourteen.
I'm sorry?
Page fourteen. Question, have you sent this out to print yet?
No. Oh no, I would not have done that before tonight.
Okay. You ready, you ready?
Ready.
Do you have any white out?
Italian.
Italian, I already put a line through it.
White, people that just went, bring to your attention, Italian one is listed, we have it written, Italian one, how long?
Three years at least.
Oh, six, six or four, because before me and before me.
And, and it's still in there. The, my problem being is if you put it there and students select it, what do you think's gonna happen the next year? And you're gonna have to have Italian two, three, four of that, and right now, I just, hate to say it, Michael, there was, there was very few people selecting Italian at the time.
They had about eight course requests last year.
What, what happened, what happened was, once Spanish came in, because we didn't have Spanish in Bristol, they did have it in Warren, that was one of the benefits of regionalizing.
Yeah.
Right, and because of that, people started selecting Spanish instead of the Italian.
Why do we include it? So historically, historically, and Mrs. McBride, correct me if I'm wrong, from what I understand, that it was a big hesitation to remove any course from the program of studies. And Mrs. McBride, you want to add to that?
I think you're kinda right, but we did, I remember we had a discussion about if it hasn't run for X number of years, we won't run it anymore. The thing about Italian was we had children in Italian one at that time, there weren't enough really to have a class, so we waited until those children off either stopped taking Italian or finished Italian.